Pam looks a little different today.
All right, what's more accurate, my cellphone time or my laptop time? There's a 10-minute difference.
It's time.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oshkosh, May 14th, Common Council Special Meeting. Can we please call the roll?
Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Mayor Paul Mary.
Here.
Present seven.
All right, we have two items on the agenda this evening. We do have a quorum, and I just want to check in with the clerk to see if we have anyone registered to speak for tonight.
I have no one registered.
All right. And we do have two emails that were received. Let's see here, for recording into the record, went from Sheila Perry. I do not have an address. Just a simple message, the mask mandate needs to go. And a second email from Patricia Dwyer-Hallquist, asking that the council not terminate the face covering until May 31st. And that she shared some information from the Winnebago County Health Department. And so those are the only two items that were submitted for recording. So we will go straight away to the new ordinance 21-253. Amend ordinance 21-221 requiring face coverings in response to COVID-19 coronavirus emergency to terminate the face covering requirement as of May 14th, 2021. Staff recommends waive the rules and adapt on first reading. So we'll take a motion and a second on waiving the rules.
Madam Mayor, go ahead, Bill.
I'm just gonna...
So Miller and Mugrower were the... okay. And discussion on waiving the rules. I have a question as to why we would waive the rules and adapt on the first reading. Not sure who requested that.
This would be the exact same as when we implemented the mask order and then renewed it in late April. We did the exact same thing.
So what is the urgency that it needs to be adapted on first reading? Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'll gladly speak to that. I mean, the reason is that the change in the CDC guidelines yesterday. But I do think it's worth pointing out that both this time and the previous times, we've had to waive the rules and adopt on first reading. It's a direct resolve the fact that we have a policy the state punted on. The state could have been more nimble, say, if it was the governor's order, and react right when we had CDC guidelines change. But, you know, we're part-timers. We don't have that luxury. We have to notice our meeting. So I think that's the reason why we're put in the position, why we need to waive the rules the first time around, so we can implement what the CDC has encouraged.
Other discussion on waiving the rules. All right, please call the roll on the motion to waive the rules and adapt on first reading.
Hanson.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Wojciechowski.
Hi.
Erickson.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Mugrower.
Hi.
Mayor Paul Mary.
No.
Karen 61.
All right, we will come back then to amending the ordinance 21-221 requiring face coverings. The face covering requirement from May 14th, 2021 termination. We'll take a motion and a second on the ordinance amendment.
Make the motion.
Miller and...
I'll second.
Ford, and discussion on amending ordinance 21-221. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a long-winded statement, right? It's... I'm ecstatic here, actually. You know, it's Friday. It's beautiful outside. Yesterday, we got new CDC guidance updating, mapping, well, new updates to masking things. Stating that fully vaccinated individuals don't need to wear masks in most situations. You know, I said on Tuesday night at our meeting that I thought it best that we don't revisit set policy unless something traumatic happens. Well, I think what happened yesterday was pretty dang dramatic. The new recommendations are based on a body of evidence showing that the safety, showing the safety and efficacy of COVID vaccines in both protecting the individual and stopping the spread. You know, last year, we had our first, our first discussion of this mandate at that big, kind of crazy meeting, where we didn't adopt it because the state ended up acting. But at that meeting, I stated that I would do everything, at least in my power as one of seven, to ensure that we don't have a mandate a day longer than necessary. Someone asked me at the time how I would know when it was not necessary. And I said I'd follow the CDC guidelines. And judging by some of the emails I got and some of the threats I got, I don't think I necessarily solved the public on my position. But nonetheless, here we are today. We should not have a mask policy that runs counter to CDC guidelines. We should not put businesses in the position of enforcing a city ordinance that runs counter to the evidence supported and presented by the CDC. It's time for our next phase in this COVID response as a city. Now, in transition, I think we have opportunity for a reset. You know, fighting COVID-19 was not a choice, but over the year, we did have a lot of choices. We had a choice between empathy and judgment, conspiracy or reality, taking people at their word or assuming ill intent in others. Between groupthink and honest interaction. Between petty politics and the business of governing, and really between kindness and hate, to be a little over dramatic there. You know, too often, too many of us succumb to that path of division. But I think today, we have a chance unify in this next phase. Like, no, the pandemic's not over. I sympathize with some of those emails we received. Like many of you, I have kids under the age of 12. Our lives are not going to change all that much yet. It's going to take a while until they either turn 12 or we have expanded vaccinations. And yeah, no guidance, you know, guidance or not, some people are not going to adhere to CDC guidelines. We can't change that merely by creating a policy. But we can't make these policies off of what-aboutisms. We need to act with the best information we have. And that information supports lifting this mandate today. Supports encouraging vaccination, which we'll do in the next resolution, I hope. So with that, I hope that my fellow colleagues can join me in supporting lifting this mandate today and that we can move on to the next phase of our COVID response. Thanks.
Councilmember Wojciechowski and then Erickson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with what Councilman Ford says. I preface by saying I will be supporting the rescension of this. You know, from the very beginning of all of this, and even before me being on council, you know, I supported the mask mandates because it was the right idea. I think it took a lot of leadership for us to be one of the few communities to do that. And throughout all this, it's really been listening to the experts in science, and that has been my belief, following the guidelines of the CDC through and through. Oops, then my... oh, my video went out. I apologize. Oh, I'm disconnected. Am I good? Am I there? Okay, sorry. Connection errors. But, you know, with that said, we have new guidelines. And as I saw Mr. Ford said, with new guidelines come new policy, and we need to return to normalcy. I mean, that has been, the end goal is to return to normalcy, and we are getting to that point. But, you know, with all that said, we are not at a great place yet with our vaccination rates. We're at about 36%, and we need to keep advocating that our vaccination rates go up. We need people to get vaccinated so that this does not become an issue, you know, in the fall or later in the year, where we have to possibly revisit another mask mandate, because no one wants that. We, you know, in our capacity, need to keep encouraging people to get vaccinations. So that's what I'm going to continue to do. I'm going to support businesses who don't feel quite comfortable yet. If a business or, you know, any place of business wants you to wear a mask in their place, we need to respect that. We need to respect each other. So I'm going to continue to push for that, but I will support this, and I will support people who, you know, make the choice to continue wearing a mask and those that are vaccinated that don't. But I would encourage people that aren't vaccinated, please do wear a mask. You know, this is about respect, working together and keeping our community safe. So I will be supporting the other resolution after this, too. I think as leaders, it's our job to continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, and that is our next goal, is to do that. So thank you so much.
And Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. So I just want to make a few points and highlight the impact of this decision and where our own local conditions are right now. I'm not dismissing the CDC's recommendations, but I want us to make sure that we understand where we're at locally. So like has said before, there's still a majority of people in our community who are not vaccinated, whether they're not yet eligible, so kids under 12 can't receive a vaccine or choose not to. These new recommendations only apply to those who are fully vaccinated. And the city of Oshkosh's fully vaccinated rate is about 33% as of yesterday, which is slightly lower than the county's percentage, 37.5%. And then the state's, which is 38.5%. So there's still too many unvaccinated people for this to be safe, for everyone to just completely stop wearing their masks. Some segments of our population are nowhere near the mark set by the CDC. There are still people who are immunocompromised. There are still neighbors and frontline workers and kids under 12 who are the ones left behind and put at risk by those unwilling to follow recommendations. I'm not confident that removing a mask requirement will improve vaccine hesitancy, maybe a little, but nothing meaningful. I've been in the weeds throughout this pandemic, listening to the community about vaccine hesitancy. And wearing a vaccine has not been a top reason why people won't get a vaccine, or not wearing a... Wearing a mask is not one of the top reasons why people won't get a vaccine. I would love to be proven wrong on this. This relies on the honor system, which I think we've learned over the past year, does not work very well. There's no way to know who is and who isn't vaccinated. This puts the burden on businesses to endorse and enforce in order to protect their employees and customers. I'm concerned about the impact on workers who face frequent exposure to individuals who are not vaccinated and refuse to wear masks. And this continues to put them at risk. So again, I'm not advocating that we dismiss these new recommendations. I'm just pointing out that we also need to take into account our own local conditions. So if we strip away all of the politics and look at the facts, we'd be in a much better spot if more people got vaccinated. We, as a council, set one of our own goals to end our local mask ordinance when 50% of the county's population is fully vaccinated. Yes, there's new recommendations, but we're... we still have almost 2/3 of our population, 62%, still not vaccinated. So if we do end up ending our mask ordinance tonight, messaging is going to be really important. We need to make sure to encourage vaccination, continuing to wear masks if you're unvaccinated or choose to continue to wear a mask, and treating one another with dignity and respect. This pandemic still is not over, and we still have to navigate how personal decisions impact the entire community. So, thank you.
Other council members? So I see that we have Health Department Director Doug Geren with us this evening. And I wanted to touch base and ask Mr. Geren his thoughts on this ordinance. And I appreciate all of the input so far that we've gotten. Mr. Geren, are you with us?
Madam Mayor, I am.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I think that many of us were caught by surprise with the announcement from the CDC. Certainly didn't expect it quite at this time, given the current rates of vaccination, although there's definitely, you know, some merit in the attempt to write up, try to increase vaccination rates. And, you know, it's a, this is a, there's a risk benefit here. You know, the risk is that we, you know, potentially have, you know, a spike in cases because we, because most people are not vaccinated. However, you know, we have, fortunately, in our county, you know, fairly low rates of burden right now. I mean, much lower than they were, still higher than we're comfortable with. And so really, this is, you know, for me, this is really about vaccination. And this was, this is a message from CDC, really, to individuals about getting vaccinated and getting back to normal. Nothing from the CDC, you know, indicated that, you know, municipalities and businesses or others should adjust their, should adjust their policies or repeal mask mandates or make any changes. This really is about trying to get the population incentivized to vaccinate so that, you know, we don't have to revisit this hopefully again in the future. Things are really trending in the right direction. And many municipalities have already discussed this issue and have not taken action, have maintained their mandates in place. This does put, you know, this does put businesses in a tight spot. You know, they are going to need to make decisions, you know, individually as to what's best for their employees. And, and, you know, as Lindsay had already pointed out, you know, we know that, you know, relying just on the honor system for people not to wear masks is not likely to work really well. And so we would fully expect that, you know, the 2/3 of the population of Oshkosh that's not vaccinated right now, we certainly don't necessarily expect that they're, you know, going to either keep wearing or start wearing masks when they haven't been, you know, all along. So I don't know that there's an urgency to act at this point. We certainly would like to see vaccination rates be a little higher, you know, before, you know, we have, you know, 2/3 with, you know, with 2/3 of the population not being vaccinated, you know, potentially taking off masks. We will expect to see, you know, some pockets of disease and surges in cases. I hope we don't. But we certainly would expect to, you know, in this situation. What's really great about this, and Counselor Ford pointed it out very well, is that it really reaffirms how effective this vaccine is. And I hope it helps put to rest, you know, that it is extremely effective, it is safe, and that, you know, we really need to do everything we can as a community to, you know, help people be less hesitant about vaccine and to seek it out. Right now, there's enough vaccine for anyone that wants it. The demand has diminished substantially. The 12- to 15-year-olds still represent a small fraction of our total population. There's more than enough vaccine for them, and there's certainly more for others. And we really won't be done with this until we get more vaccine in arms. So I guess, you know, I would urge the council some caution. I would urge the council to not feel like they need to react immediately and, and, you know, to take the time to consider and perhaps even hear from, you know, businesses in our community that are, you know, really put in a squeeze and in the middle here about what to do, you know, before, you know, before moving on. Others before you have already rescinded mask mandates, and, and like I said, others have not. I just feel like Oshkosh is, is in a place to hopefully, you know, consider this a little bit further and, and, and act in a way that is really most protective of our citizens and supports our businesses. But most importantly, you know, we need your support in supporting vaccine and really encouraging the population to move forward. It's great that persons can, you know, now go indoors with confidence if they're fully vaccinated. That's, it's a wonderful thing, and it gets us a little bit closer to being normal. But it's a little bit early for us to feel confident that if we rescind the mask mandate, that, you know, people will, you know, adhere to that and wear masks if they haven't been vaccinated yet. So, you know, you've already got all the numbers discussed through that. You know, I do feel that, you know, it's, it's worth taking the appropriate time to consider, you know, before making a decision and rescinding. Obviously, you know, we respect your decision, and we'll work with you the best we can to continue to promote recovery from this pandemic through vaccination as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Geren. And do we also have Chief Stanley here with us? I see the Oshkosh Fire Department icon.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Chief Stanley, do you have any additional points that you'd like to share? Or would you share what your thoughts are on this?
Yes, ma'am. I would concur that, you know, with some of the previous statements, that we do need to highly encourage the vaccination still, you know, that I don't think the numbers in the county or, you know, certainly represented in the city or where we would want them to be. And so I think we need to continue to message that, you know, continue to message that masking is an option. You know, that even regardless of what the results are on the decision this evening, you know, people still can exercise that option. You know, I do have some concerns that, you know, we may lose ground. You know, obviously, the safest course of action would be to continue to wear the mask. But also, we have really relied on the guidance of CDC, you know, that's... And I appreciate the concerns that there's no way to verify whether someone's had that vaccine or not. But I think at this point, you know, that we're in a difficult situation. Mask fatigue is real. But how do we balance out, you know, good messaging, continuing to support mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and all those disease prevention points that we've been advocating for all along? So, and I know I kind of talked in a big circle there, and yes, this is a very difficult decision. I don't envy anybody on council. So clearly, as the emergency manager, I would always advocate for the safest course of action, but it isn't always the best course of action for our community.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, I think I've got a question for Mr. Geren. How many vaccinations are we giving a day right now, Doug? I mean, how many people got vaccinated yesterday, if you got that data?
Um, I see I have, looks like from yesterday, let's see, this data is for this morning. So from yesterday morning until this morning, it looks like about 1,127 doses were administered over the 24 hours prior to this morning. That's a little higher than it's been in recent days because of the addition of the 12- to 15-year-olds.
Okay, great. So is anybody waiting to get a vaccine? Are we still at, are we still at the point where we were a couple of weeks ago when we last had you on, where there's no waiting? You can still walk into CVS, Walgreens, multiple other places, the Expo Center on Wednesdays, and get your shot immediately? Is that still accurate?
Yes, there's no, I mean, if you want a vaccine, you know, you should be able to get one in fairly short order, either through your medical provider, a pharmacy, clinic, you know, or other location that's offering vaccine.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Councilmember Mugrower, did you have your hand up?
I did not, but I will, actually, I will, though. Appreciate the time. Thank you. A quick question for County Health Director Geren and then a very brief statement. County Health Director, and I hadn't planned on going down this road, but you're advocating that we hold the line, that we hold tight for a while longer. I respect that. Are you also advocating the same, are you advocating to the other municipalities and communities within Winnebago County under your jurisdiction that they institute mask mandates at the moment? I mean, are you as vehemently as going to reach out to them? Because our mandate hasn't been enforced. It's been an advisory the whole time. Let's be honest what it really has been. And so we're in no different position than Nina, than any of the townships that surround us, anybody within the 170,000 people that are under the Health Department's purview. I'm wondering if you'll be going to them and urging more caution than they currently are taking, even at the county level with the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, thank you for that question. So we're not urging any change at this time for any municipality. I mean, it'd be, you know, is, you know, we know that masking works. It's second to vaccine in terms of, you know, preventing the spread of this disease. And, you know, do I personally wish that, you know, we had a county-wide mandate? Yes, but, you know, I think, you know, you've already pointed out that, you know, it is largely symbolic. It's, it's, it's not something that is, you know, actively enforced. However, in the absence of, you know, an order or a law, people often feel like it's not necessary. And that, you know, if there's a rule or law in place, it, you know, it means that it's necessary. When you take it away, people feel like it's not necessary. And we really don't want them to feel that way. You know, masking is still very necessary with, you know, 2/3 of the Oshkosh population not being vaccinated. We shouldn't be changing course on that. And, and, you know, it's, what the CDC, you know, has done here is, is really help those, you know, that have been vaccinated to be able to exercise a little more freedom with confidence that they are well-protected and that they're less likely to transmit infection to others. You know, I think we had, you know, we didn't have the science that helped us say whether or not a vaccination, vaccinated person, you know, could potentially, you know, transmit an infection to others. And what the CDC is saying is that, look, there's really not evidence that that's happening. If it is, it's at a very, very low level. And, and so if you've been vaccinated, be confident that you're not a risk to others. And, but that's still the minority of the population right now. So, thank you.
No, and I appreciate that. I do. And the position that you're in, and that's not a fun question to be asked and to answer, so I appreciate that. With that said, all we're, all a few of us are asking is to put us on the same playing field as everybody around us. And so I respect the position of don't change anything. However, we're still up here in terms of the expectations that are being placed on us. And if you, if we take an honest look at the data, the science that is happening around us, the data that's happening for the communities around us, since Governor Evers' order was overturned in late March, and you look at the communities around us that have or do not have, and the difference is marginal. The difference is, is showing that the mandate itself is not effective. Masks are very effective. Vaccines are even more effective. And you're going to hear from us, hopefully, in a few minutes, that we fully support that and encourage that, because they absolutely are. But the mandate itself is not effective. And so there are people that absolutely need to continue masking, and I encourage that. And I think it's time that we stop shaming both sides of this, of this topic. It's time that if you happen to be walking down the street or in a, in a, in a building and somebody's wearing one, instead of, you know, saying that snide remark about them wearing one, how about you smile, you give a head nod, and you keep moving along? That's where we need to be at, because there are plenty of people that need to continue masking, fully supportive of that. But it's time for us to get on a little bit more level playing field here. So it's no surprise I'll be supporting this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is a really, you know, this is a difficult decision because... So this is a really, you know, this is a difficult decision because, you know, two weeks ago, we were in one place and acknowledging that our vaccinations were were trailing. And as we've heard today, two thirds are still unvaccinated in the city. So tonight, we're making a decision. Are we making our, you know, this is a rhetorical question, but are we making our decision for one third of our population or two thirds of our population, public health, safety, and welfare? It's true, the enforcement has not been there on this mask ordinance. It's also true that we are trailing behind the other cities in this vaccination rate. I don't know what came first, the chicken or the egg here, but our local conditions don't quite match up. I mean, with the CDC guidance, this was for vaccinated people. And even in vaccinated, full fully vaccinated status, there are still requirements for public transit, planes, trains, nursing homes, hospitals, and businesses that continue to require that. You know, the university put out an email yesterday at like 3:40 PM regarding graduation this weekend that, you know, through all four commencements, masks are still required. And they referenced, in addition to that, that the city has this ordinance. You know, I had a, you know, a phone call with the chancellor this morning to say, hey, what happens if our ordinance changes tonight? Does that change or affect, you know, commencement ceremonies tomorrow? And his response was, no, they will continue to do this unless something happens today that the system wide, you know, changed that. I was elated and excited to get my my vaccine and get past that two week mark and start returning back to, you know, some normal things. But we've heard from a lot of people who not only haven't been vaccinated but can't get vaccinated for for whatever health reasons. So this is a really, really difficult thing. And I'm still not hearing earlier what the urgency is for ending this ordinance, given that we didn't do an emergency meeting within 24 hours of implementing the mask ordinance. So I just still have not heard what the urgency is for us to react this quickly when the CDC also said that they may be changing even further within the coming days, the the guidance. So with that said, I guess I, you know, I'm I'm really torn here. But I also am appreciative of all of our council members and all of the folks that spoke about perhaps it's time for us to set aside this division in our community on masking and just really focus the efforts and energies on promoting the vaccine, which is, I think, what what we all see and hear. My apologies. Courtney, please speak.
Thank you. We can still promote it without enforcing a mask mandate. And I understand that it means that the businesses and people themselves have to regulate themselves. But we're at a point, it's been a year and a half. We're at a point where people need to take charge of what they want to do. And yes, like helping out, you know, vaccine and the benefits of it, we definitely should be doing that. But we don't need a mandate anymore. Half the people don't follow it anyways. So going around in circles, it it it's pointless and we're wasting time. Thanks.
So given that we do have an expiration date on this as as May 31st and another council meeting in between, oh, Councilmember Ford, go ahead.
Yeah, just just real quick, I guess, in reaction to some of the some of the things the mayor said. One of the challenges throughout throughout the city's navigation of the pandemic is the ambiguity around it. I remember a year ago saying, well, the virus dictates what we do, not not not, right? Not not us. We get those snarky emails still that say what happened to two weeks to flatten the curve. And I'm always reminded of the quote, I'm going to paraphrase poorly. But, you know, when the facts change, I think we need to change with it. And the reality is to change with it. And I think this is an extension of that. I think we did get get new guidance from the CDC. And what what makes that new guidance to me so powerful is that for the first time in this pandemic response, we have personal agency over our action. The huge struggle in the initial mask debate was the fact that we, as individuals, were wearing masks for everybody else. It wasn't about protecting ourselves. It wasn't enough to just say, leave it up to the individual to make their choice, because my actions had an impact on all of your actions. But with universal vaccine eligibility, and now with this new evidence showing that we can actually slow community spread, even if we're vaccinated, we're not spreading it, that gives us actual personal agency in our COVID response for the first time. Now, now I get it. Some people are not going to get vaccinated. We can't force people to get vaccinated. But we sure as heck should not be punishing individuals who are getting vaccinated simply because of those two thirds that that aren't. Now, I I sympathize with the argument, like I've said, about about children who aren't eligible yet. Yeah, so that's something that my family's going to have to deal with. We're not going to be going out or doing anything until those kids get vaccinated. My wife will kill me for saying this, but she's not watching, but she's immunocompromised. She's going to have to keep wearing a mask. And you know what? That that stinks, but she's going to follow that guideline. But I think we are at a point in in this response where we can shift it from this community response to an individual response. I wrote on Facebook earlier this week, yeah, I I think we botched a little bit of our community response and probably prolonged our agony. But you know what? We're policymakers. We don't have the ability to control that. But we're at the point now where we can follow and react to what the CDC has said and do it in a way that's not putting our businesses in an untenable situation and do it in a way that allows us to pivot towards what really matters at this point, which is making sure we get as many dang people vaccinated as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Further comments?
Aaron has his hand up.
Aaron, I'm sorry, your your video, I see the hand up now, but it was kind of spinning there for a bit. Go ahead.
Bad connection. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate, you know, regardless of what decision is made tonight, you know, that doesn't change the fact that you can and you can wear a mask still. You should, if you're not vaccinated and you're out in public or you're in an indoor spot. You know, I I and everyone else should respect businesses. If your employer requires you, I work at a school, and they're still going to require us to wear a mask, even though we are fully vaccinated. I respect that. I will do that. We need to, as leaders, encourage people to follow that and, you know, respect businesses and not fight with them. Because, you know, these are workers who are just doing their job and trying to keep themselves safe and keep you safe. So I want to reiterate that we, as a council, do support, you know, masks that they work, that they keep people safe, especially for those who are not vaccinated. We need to follow federal guidelines, as you said, that, you know, you need to continue to wear a mask on public transit. That has not changed. But I do think what we are doing is giving that agency back to people, not punishing people who have gotten fully vaccinated and want to return to normalcy. But I think our focus needs to shift away from mandating masks to encouraging and incentivizing getting vaccinated. And, you know, I've talked to other council members. We have ideas on how to incentivize that, how to encourage it, and we're going to move forward hopefully on that. But that needs to be our main focus right now. And I think, you know, this is a step towards that. And the fact that we can say that we are making this decision based on evidence from the CDC, you know, I I am proud of that fact that we're not just doing this for political reasons or just because we don't like it. We can say, we waited until we were presented new evidence, and we are making a new decision. So I think that's where I'm at, why I'm supporting it. It's important that we make some progress and move on from this. I'm sorry, like I said, I will be supporting this. But, you know, our focus does need to be getting people vaccinated. Thank you.
And with hesitation, I'm inclined to agree with several of the council members. And and thank you, Councilmember Miller, for asking the question earlier. How many doses were administered yesterday? What was that, 1,120, which is a bit of an uptick? That's an encouraging sign. And and certainly, as more and more young people are able and more people are have access. And as I understand it, there are a number of go to folks where they are programs for getting vaccine out as well, no appointments. There there really is, you know, very little obstacle. So, you know, many of you may be surprised to hear me say this, but I I am actually going to support this as well. I just want to give one last option for anybody before we take the roll. All right, please take the roll. Oh, Councilmember Miller.
Doug, would you, this is your chance for a little PR opportunity here. You want to just maybe any any new new thoughts or anything you have or any any specifics, weekends or nights, or any plans to take this deeper into the community?
Thanks, Councilmember.
Actually, I'm sorry. Can we can we hold off on that to the next item on the agenda?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. But I just want to make sure Doug can get his message out there. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, if if you don't mind sticking around for the next item, Mr. Garen.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Please take the roll. Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
Aye.
Mukerower?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carrie Sixone? All right. So the new resolution following this is Resolution 21-254, encourage the public to comply with CDC COVID-19 guidelines and to obtain COVID-19 vaccine. We have a motion and a second.
Almost.
Councilmember Miller and Aaron, seconds. All right. Discussion on new Resolution 21-254. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, so so I initiated this in hopes that this could be kind of a bridge to the next phase in our pandemic response. So basically, what this what this resolution does is it acknowledges the effectiveness of masking policy. It acknowledges the effectiveness of the vaccine. It acknowledges the latest CDC guidelines. And it encourages residents and businesses to continue to follow the latest CDC masking recommendations. So that would include recommendations that individuals who are not vaccinated continue to to wear their mask inside per CDC guidelines. It encourages, you know, the specifics are on the CDC website, but it also encourages individuals when they're visiting nursing homes or other specific situations where even vaccinated people are are encouraged to wear the mask under the CDC guidelines. And I purposely didn't write anything specific in there. I just made general reference reference to the latest CDC masking recommendation in anticipation that those will will change, because we certainly don't want to put something that's out of date into our into our codes. Finally, it has a result, it's resolved at the last there that the City of Oshkosh supports a public education campaign encouraging vaccination. And that is something where Councilmember Mukerower and I have had preliminary discussions with Amy Albright at Visit Oshkosh and the city manager. We're actually meeting next week about it. But the goal there is to similar what we did with Love Oshkosh and masking, that we find a way to try to find creative solutions to some of the vaccine hesitancy in our community and actually commit some resources behind it. So certainly more to come on that, and I encourage everyone to be involved in that. But really, I hope this sends the message home that we're not saying the pandemic is over by by lifting the mask mandate. We're saying that, hey, the CDC guidance has changed, and our goal here is pivoting toward putting all of our resources behind vaccinations to actually end this thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Mukerower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to say a big thank you to Councilmember Ford for putting it together. We've had some good discussion on the topic over the last week or week or two, me and him. So I appreciate him taking that effort and 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 putting this together. It's important that we, as a council, I hope it's unanimous, put this message out to our community that masking is still important. There are absolutely times when it should be required. And then there's also, there's times when people need to to do that for their own personal reasons and that we should be supportive of that and that. And vaccines, and that vaccinations themselves are are the the ticket to get out of this, the ticket to move on from this as quick as possible. So putting all of our effort into that and hopefully no more mandates in terms of of masks, it's a good a good way to to move our effort in a very positive direction. And I know we've expressed it, I think, individually and collectively at times to County Health Director Garen. This council stands behind you in any way possible. If you need anything, all you need to do is ask. We are here to help. I know city manager Roloff and his staff are are more than willing to to jump in and do whatever we need to do in terms of a messaging campaign and helping getting getting the message out. So we're all on board, and this is a good first step. So, thank you.
Other council members? Councilmember Erickson?
Well, I can let it, I think Councilmember Wojciechowski had his hand up, if he wants to go first.
Yes, Aaron, I'm so sorry. I'm just not seeing your video. Thank you.
Some are showing up on mine, so it's okay. I just wanted to say, obviously, I support this. And I think it's a good start, but it's definitely not enough. You know, encouraging is not enough, to put it quite simply. We need to incentivize. And I think we have a great opportunity with the ARPA funds that we are going to be receiving. And I think we we need to be bold and commit money to incentivizing people getting vaccines. I think it's going to be one of the better ways to encourage people. So we're moving away from punishing and we're moving towards rewarding people for getting vaccines and, you know, keeping our community safe. So for people at home, this is definitely not it. Like, we're doing this as a start, but there is more that needs to be done. And I look forward to working with the rest of the council and getting some ideas out there to encourage and incentivize getting vaccines. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wojciechowski. And Councilmember Erickson, did you have something else?
Sure, thank you. I'm glad to see this resolution and something positive. I think on the, you know, as much as we can promote vaccination rates within the the city, I think that's fantastic. And that's the direction that we need to move in. I think on the side of incentivizing, I know there's been communities who have tried different things and have not always seen the the benefit of it. So I think we do need to take some time to really think about that and and listen to what are the hesitancies, what's going to move people to become vaccinated? And I would offer up the work that I've been doing. I think what we've been hearing is it's really about those barriers to receiving vaccine when they're working in a job that doesn't provide paid sick leave to go and get the vaccine and the time off that they may need if they do have side effects afterward. So I think we can think broadly about what it takes to get somebody to get a vaccine. And I do wonder, I'm tempted to propose an amendment just to add some specific language that masks are still required on go transit and other transit systems per the presidential executive order. I've been in some email conversations along with Transportation Director Collins with some confusion about why masks are still required on public transit. I do think that might help clear up some confusion. So I would just offer that up in case anyone has comments on that.
And I'm glad that you did that, because that was going to be my next request is is a motion to amend to specify those areas that are still required. So I'll second that. Any discussion on it? The amendment? Councilmember Mukerower?
I think we need some clarity on what the actual amendment is before we get a, I guess, a second even, if we can get specific. I I don't disagree. But I think the city attorney Lawrenson is going to scream in a pretty quick second here if if we don't clear up what the amendment is, so.
Yeah, do you want to restate that then, Lindsay?
Sure, I think, so if it makes sense to maybe include it in the section
Sure, I think, um, so if it makes sense to maybe include it in the section. Let's see, I think that.
Before it be resolved, um. Where, uh, the N says businesses to continue following the latest CDC masking recommendations?
Yeah, I think so. So, um. Saying masks are still required on go transit and other transit systems per the, uh, presidential executive order that's effective until September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Way too fast. Slow it down for me. Masks are still required.
On go transit. And other, maybe the go transit system. Per the presidential executive order. Effective September thirteenth. Like, effective until September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I got it. Ange, did you get it? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I second, and now discussion on the amendment. All right, so. Let's go ahead and take the roll then on the amendment. Hanson?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Wojciechowski? Erickson?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Mugrow?
Hi.
Mayor Palmieri?
Hi.
Carried seven. Now, uh. We already have the original motion on the floor for the resolution, but I did want to go back to Mr. Garen. Um, since it'd be more appropriate for him to, uh, speak to the items Councilmember Miller suggested earlier at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and, and thank you to the council for, you know, a meaningful discussion on this issue and. You know, sharing, um, all your points of view. This is not an easy issue. To make a, make a call on right now, um, and, and I appreciate your role in this to. Have a really civil discourse about this. Um, in terms of vaccine, um, you know. WCvaccine.org is really your one-stop shop for finding vaccine in Winnebago County and in the surrounding area. Uh, we make sure that we keep that up to date and include all vaccination sites. Um, those include, uh, you know, uh, links to healthcare, pharmacies, to mobile clinics, to our regular clinics, uh, that we have. And that we're involved with at Culver and at Sunnyview. We've committed to walk-in Wednesdays, um, at, at Sunnyview through next month. Um, and are continuing to work with Culver to promote vaccination of the twelve to fifteen-year-olds at that location. Uh, we are also, uh, working with groups within the county to identify opportunities, um, for mobile vaccination sites. Um, um, and would certainly appreciate, you know, any assistance, uh, the council can provide on promoting that. As, as we become aware of opportunities for mobile sites, uh, where people are really looking for vaccine. Uh, on top of what we're identifying as, as potential gaps, we really want to hear about those so that we can either, you know, make plans to, uh, attempt to staff those or. Um, find other resources within our community. The pharmacies have been wonderful partners. And are, are willing to assist with additional clinics within the community. We really want to reduce as many barriers as possible. Um, lower that threshold to getting vaccinated and make it as easy as possible for persons to do so. Certainly, um. Counselor's, uh, Erickson's point about businesses and, you know, really encouraging businesses to. Help their workers get vaccinated and provide support for them. Incentivize, uh, incentivizing vaccination is, does work. Um, you know, the types of incentives and how those incentives applies, are applied, does matter. Uh, and there's, we're learning a lot right now about that. Um, you know, we're seeing everything from, you know, a lottery in Ohio, um, you know, to, uh, you know, cash payments. Um, you know, to time, you know, uh, pay time off. Um, there's a lot of different incentives going on right now and, and, and we'll be learning from those as far as what works and, and perhaps what doesn't. But, uh, more importantly, you know, it's just to really keep the messaging on and. Or wherever possible, and really with, um. To really help drive home that, um, you know, we're not over this yet. Masks are still really important. If you're not vaccinated yet, you still need to keep those masks on. That will help us get us through this faster, um, you know, with, with, uh, you know, less likelihood of, uh, of outbreaks, of surges. Um, and, you know, unnecessary hospitalizations, uh, illnesses, missed work, um, or worse. And, and so thank you for the commitment to, um, you know, to, to, to work with the health department. On, on promoting vaccine. That is really our, our primary goal right now, and we'll do everything we can to, to help move that needle forward as fast as we can. We are lagging, um. You know, behind the state average. And, uh, we've, we've got a little ground to make up.
All right, um, before we go to the vote on the resolution as amended. I just want to ask, um, in the one, two, three, fourth, whereas. There's a reference to, um. Fully vaccinated people no longer need to wear a mask or physically distance in any setting. Except for required by federal, state, local, tribal or territorial laws, rules and regulations, including. Local business and workplace guidance. The, um, any setting language, is, is that a direct quote from the CDC? Because I also read language that said. Yes, it's still required on transit, planes, trains, um, you know, airports, nursing homes, hospitals. And, and that too, so I just wanted to make sure we had that, um, correct. Um, all right. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, that's a direct quote from the, uh, the guidance of, of May thirteenth, and I think all of those situations you just described would be covered by the second half of that quote. Looking at federal rules, regulations, workplace guidance, et cetera.
So part of the educational piece of getting this, um, moved out there is. You know, explaining to people that, yes, there will still be some businesses. That will require it, maybe due to their corporate rules or local ownership decisions. Um, and yes, it's still going to be required in these other settings, so I hope that we'll, we'll be able to. Not necessarily emphasize, but at least, uh, continue to educate that it's still patchwork. The university, the school district, um, transit, et cetera, so. Uh, I just wanted to make sure we, we didn't lose sight of that and, and thank you, everybody, to spending your Friday evening on this topic. If there's no other. Discussion, let's call the roll. Hanson?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Wojciechowski?
Hi.
Erickson?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Mugrow?
Hi.
Mayor Palmieri?
Hi.
Carried seven. Thank you, everyone, again, and, uh, those listening in, and I see there are some guests. Uh, we will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Mugrow and Miller? All right.
Sounds like a law firm.
Yeah, yeah. All right, please, please take the roll. Hanson?
Here.
Miller?
Hi.
Wojciechowski?
Hi.
Erickson?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Mugrow?
Hi.
Mayor Palmieri?
Hi.
Carried seven. We are adjourned. All right, good evening.
Be so.